They're just observing the crazy ones up there.
Yeah, nice.
Yep.
Good evening. I'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Board of Education to order. This is a regular board meeting of the Board. And I'd like to ask you to please stand and join with us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is Board Meeting Minutes. And this is for discussion and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of...
Wait, roll call.
Oh, I didn't call the roll. Darn it all. Looks like we're all here. But yeah, you should probably call the roll to make it right.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. French?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
I am here. I truly am.
Thank you.
Moving on to Board Meeting Minutes. May 5th, 2014 is discussion and approval of the minutes of the meeting on April 14th, and also the meeting of April 28th. We're not voting on these minutes. If anyone has comments, questions, or corrections, now is the time to say so. I hear none. So we will move on, and the minutes will be approved. Moving on to item four on the agenda, which is ordinarily District Highlights and Recognitions for May 5th. We don't have any on the agenda for tonight. So we will move on to item five on the agenda. And that is reports. 5.01 is the Superintendent's Report. John?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I thought this evening might be a good opportunity to bring the Board and the public up to date in regard to some adjustments in the organizational chart. These positions are mostly relevant to district office positions. And before I kind of walk through some of those changes that are highlighted on the screen for us, I thought I'd share the three goals I laid out in terms of guiding us and where we wanted to take the organizational chart. The first goal, and I stated this when we went into strategic planning, was around making sure that the organizational chart, the district-level administrators, are aligned to what we see in the strategic plan. And I'll reference some of those as I go through some of the changes. The second one was to make sure that it was aligned to providing more support directly to schools. For me, that means more direct support to teachers and to principals as they try and move forward in their work. And the last goal was really to make the structure such that the Board and the Superintendent, the Board and Leadership Team and the Superintendent Treasurer were more closely aligned regarding policy, procedures, finances, and goal-setting for the district overall. And so I chose to put, highlight the changes in the chart to kind of show where we were when I came on board last year and where we're headed. So I'll walk through the changes in there in red, and then I'll kind of back up. I'll try and tell you how they align with those particular goals. The first big change you'll notice up there is, in the past, we'd had two Assistant Superintendents. And we've used the term Chief Academic Officer, CEO, COO. I think we're kind of in agreement. It's time to just have a single title. So we had two Assistant Superintendents. One was on the curriculum side, one was on the operations side. Of course, we didn't fill the one from last year when Karen McClellan retired, so we sat without that. My intention is to, rather than have two Assistant Superintendents, is to change the title to Deputy Superintendent. That's the position Mark Hersheiser currently sits in. Under the responsibility of Deputy Superintendent, the major job responsibilities there will be policy and guidelines. On the behalf of the Board and the Superintendent, it keeps it closer to us. Budget oversight, in terms of looking at department budgets, making sure that the spending we're doing is aligned with our goals. Looking for cost efficiencies and savings within the system through process development. One of the charges I've given Mr. Hersheiser moving forward is looking at business practices. One in particular that comes to mind is Lean Six Sigma, as business operations in terms of efficiencies. And the other piece that we're going to bring over under his supervision, so it's more closely aligned to ours, is EMIS reporting, state reporting. Been a lot about that in the paper recently. And we want to make sure. The important piece to remember about EMIS reporting is that's the driver on the funding formula. And if that data isn't correct, your funding from the state isn't going to be correct. And that changes the data upkeep. The accuracy of that data is extremely important. So I've asked Mr. Hersheiser to take supervision of that over, and that includes probably going to manage a monthly data meeting where we're bringing people who are inputting the data and understanding the data to make sure we're getting it correct. So that's kind of that policy leadership function for us. The other pieces we shared with you recently, under Executive Directors, in the past, we had six. We have made the move for Barb Wallace, who was the Executive Director for Pupil Services, you see up there. She's taking over for David Baker, effective in the school year as Executive Director of Elementary Academic Affairs. You know about Barb's history, so I won't go into that. We reduced ourselves from six Executive Directors to five. And what it really means on the curriculum side is we go from three Executive Directors to two, and we lose an Assistant Superintendent for curriculum. So the nice thing about that is it kind of shrinks the policymakers, decision-makers at the district level to myself with those two Executive Directors for Secondary and Elementary reporting straight directly to me. I like that model. It could put more pressure on me than necessary, but that's where I'd prefer to be. So that's on the Executive Directors. Then if you slide down, you see under Directors. Thanks, Jill. And some of these you're aware of. In the past, we had six Directors: Curriculum Instruction, IT, Assessment Accountability, Preschool Logistics, Food Health and Safety. We made some adjustments in red. We've added two Directors' positions. One is a redesign, so we go from six to eight. The additional ones are, we added two to HR, Human Resources. One to work mostly with our certificated staff, the other to work with our classified staff, under the direction of our Executive Director, Kirk Chakowski. It's a model that's uncommon in most school systems. I'd share with you that with Human Resources accounting for about 80% of our budget, I think we need good oversight there to make sure we're maximizing our human resource capacity. That's an area we need, we're going to work on. With Barb Wallace moving to Executive Director of Pupil Services and not replacing that, we've added the Director of Special Education. It's a lower-level administrative position than currently, more focused just on special education. And we added a Director of Facilities to work in conjunction with Jeff LaRosa, Jeff LaRosa's direction. So that position will parallel Bob Lynn on the Director, the other Director side of logistics and purchasing. So we kind of took some district-level administrative positions from over on the curriculum side and put them over on the operations side. And I felt that'll help us more than what we want to do. Last place you'll see is in the Coordinator positions. We added that position for CCIP federal and state grants. This is Title I, Title II, Title III dollars, as well as our state-required CCIP, Continuous Improvement Plan, reporting to the state. That's where we account for the dollars spent in our Title I budget, which is roughly $2.3 million, I believe. Our Title II budget, which is our professional development budget, and our Title III budget, which is our ESL budget, our English Second Language budget. And that's all tied to the CCIP. We still have our Special Education Director, excuse me, Coordinators. We added a, we're looking at a Coordinator of Minority Achievement. We've posted that position. We have not interviewed yet. Frankly, I'm kind of holding off. We reached out to the Kerwin Institute from Ohio State, which does a lot of research on minority families and their circumstances, and trying to partner with them a little bit and see what we can put together to examine where we are and what practices would work. And the other one is Career Technical. We found in our work with the Pathways Model that Mr. Reeves has led with us this year, this whole piece of Career Technical, both from the state and the requirements coming and the opportunities we can crave for students with our new Pathways Model is a big piece. Career Technical, currently we have programming at both Delaware Career Center Downtown High School and the Fine Arts Center down in downtown. And so we also have programming we can look at internally for our high school and middle school students with some of the changes coming. So what you see on there, if we'd slide up again a little bit, please. Thank you. We shrink kind of at the top, fewer Assistant Superintendents, few Executive Directors. The Directors and Coordinators are positions that, for us, are out in the field working with principals and teachers more directly. The policymakers at the other end, fewer of those, particularly in the curriculum side, we think is kind of a leaner, meaner machine to move forward. The Career Technical, Minority Achievement, HR, those are all places where, when I look through the information from our community on the strategic planning, are areas where folks believe we can bring more leadership and bring more progress. And so that's where those positions came from. Special education students, some of the achievement of our subgroups on our report card demonstrate that we have some work to do to close those gaps. And focus leadership there from a research perspective, to helping teachers and principals help us deliver programs is kind of where we want to go. So those are the changes to that level. I appreciate your support. We're excited. We've had great applicants. We've got that process rolling on top of the other positions we have that we're replacing as we've had some changes in principalship. We're excited to move forward. So I thought that might be a good update for you. Happy to take any questions if you have them.
Questions for John, comments? I hear none, John. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
I think it represents some important directions. Moving on in the agenda tonight, public comments for this evening, the first portion of public comments. Public comments, at this point in the agenda, are reserved for items that are on the agenda for action. And you are limited to five minutes, and you will be told, you will see on the screen when your time is up. With that, we have one individual signed up to speak tonight, Peg Duffy.
My comments and concerns relate to 7.01. A lot of this I'd just like to hear in discussion. Was the RFP process utilized in this? If the Treasurer's Report hasn't planned, please include the proposals that were submitted, kind of a review of cost comparison, as well as any significant terms, just so that we have a good overview. I noticed in the contract that is being presented, under the scope of services, it includes managing the RFP development. And this kind of concerned me, because if you have the contract and you will be managing the RFP development, that makes me feel that the door could easily be closed to anybody else. It's like writing the specs for you and nobody else. That bothered me. Just, this was brought up previously, but I think it needs to be repeated, that the Gallagher contract is signed by a former Treasurer of this district, all of which says to me, the term transparency comes to mind.
Thank you, Peg. I'm the only speaker, as I said, that's signed up for this portion of public comment. We will move on in the agenda, and Peg, I think some of your issues that you raised in your comments can be addressed at that point. Moving on to item seven on the agenda, 7.01. The Resolution to Approve the Insurance Consulting Services Agreement between Gallagher Benefit Services, Inc. and the Westerville City Schools Board of Education, which actually would be effective May 1st through April 30th of 2017. So this is a three-year contract. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Second. We'll wait just a second. We have a motion and a second. That's quite all right. Very good, John. With a motion and a second on item 7.01, I'm going to turn this over to the Treasurer.
Madam President, members of the Board, this is a three-year contract with Arthur J. Gallagher and Company. This is a consultant we've used for the last two years. We did not use an RFP process this year. We did use one last year, which I think we had, Dr. French was part of that. We had, I think, roughly 12 companies that applied two years ago when we did this. The process took about three months to go through. Prior to that, we voided the contract with Gallagher and basically started over. We actually, I think we were probably paying them somewhere around $150,000 a year for consulting fees. When we changed the contract, and we bid this out, we had one company that offered to do it for $60,000 each year for three years. This was two years ago, to give you some history. We had one company that offered to do it for $78,000 for one year, and Gallagher offered to do it for $75,000 for two years. We went to Gallagher because they were the one who the committee selected, and we basically had them do it for $60,000 for two years, was even what they bid, the process. Since then, we've added, basically, the biggest thing we've added is the Affordable Care Act, which is a tremendous amount of time and can be penalties anywhere from $500,000 to a million. So we have to get this right. So we did not redo the RFP process for this particular contract. What Gallagher is referring to in the RFP process in their contract is the RFP for all the services that they bid out, as far as insurance, health, medical, dental, vision, life. Those are the RFP that they're talking about bidding out, not what we produce to assign a vendor. Okay? So when they talk about RFP, it's not their own. It's everybody else's that we basically use on their behalf. We did increase the cost this year. We offered them $75,000 for the first year, which is really what they offered to do it two years ago. We offered them $75 this year, $80 the following year, and $85 the third year. The only difference in this contract is as far as what we held them to, because one of the stipulations we held them to last time was that we are to be the only group that pays them. We don't want Medical Mutual or who other insurance paying them on the back end, and then us wondering what services, who's paying for what. So that's excluded. We still have that exclusion. When I look at some of the costs associated, Gallagher gave me a couple things, comparison when we were negotiating with them. If we had a staff of 473 staff members, a district out there right now is paying $88,000 with a staff of 473. There's another staff that has $1,391, paying $220,000. We're paying $75,000. And our staff is about $1,600,000. So I do think we're getting a great deal for this. I would imagine if the other districts knew how cheap we were getting, they would be in trouble. I have not, I have not shared that with the districts, other districts, but if they ask, I will. So I do think we're getting a great price for this. Gallagher is a good company. It's a statewide company. Dan Shively is the Treasurer who was, who signs this document. He now is representing all of Ohio with Arthur J. Gallagher. Yes, he was a former Treasurer of this district, but he doesn't operate in that capacity. We can't control where people go. I just, I mean, we just don't deal with him. We've been working with him quite a bit the last two years, but I don't, me personally, I don't see a conflict of interest. I've never felt once that he's not looking out for our interest, you know, just because he was Treasurer here before. So I think Dan does a great job for us. We now have a new person. Dan is, I believe, going on in charge of the whole state, is a person named Maggie Neely, which is our new consultant. So she's basically took over Dan's spot with us. So he's really not working with us anymore. He's pretty much moved on in charge of the state. So I, you know, like I said, it is a three-year contract. The only difference in here, there's still a 60-day clause that we could call him up today and say, 60 days from now, the contract's void. That's still in here. That didn't change. That was part of the old contract, is part of this one. So for some reason, we're not happy with our services, or we felt there was a problem, we could terminate the services. Next year, in the contract, there's an automatic renewal unless we tell them that we're going to bid it out or more stop them. We still always have that right to cancel the service.
You mean in three years?
In three years, right. It's a three-year contract. So at the end of three years, if we decide we want to continue it for another year, it would automatically roll unless we tell them no. And then my guess is if, in three years, we could, we'll face the, I guess the question is, do we bid it out again in three years or not? But the RFP process doesn't have anything to do with how we bid it out to them. The RFP is how they're bidding it to Medical Mutual. Like, in other words, they'll do, because we're self-insured every year, they may look at Nationwide or Ohio Health or different companies, and that's the RFP process they're talking about, is what's the services we're going to receive. Okay?
Okay, just for clarification. So the part that they put in the contract regarding RFPs, they're interpreting, or they mean to say that that is for the purpose of them bidding out to get the best deal for us?
That's correct.
For whatever, it might be dental or whatever. Okay.
Right. They absolutely have no bearing. If we were doing RFP, they don't help with that. They would not help with that at all.
Okay, yeah. And also, they, they do, they're doing such a good deal for us because of past history, maybe?
I think because West-
Or they want Westerville on their-
I think Westerville looks good on their resume.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are, those are-
Comments or questions? Anything else?
So let me ask you one more, a little quickie. So after the first year, well, at any time, we can-
At any time.
Eliminate them if we give them a 60-day notice.
That's correct. That's correct.
And we do meet with them monthly. I'm, I go to the meetings most of the time, but we, as the Insurance Trust representative. And they do inform us on what's going on. I think the biggest issue right now is the affordable care issue. That's our biggest concern, because it could cost us a lot of money if we don't do it right.
Right. The penalties are staggering if it's not done right. And I mean staggering, like $2 million penalties. So it has to be done correctly.
Thank you. Anything else? We've had good service from Gallagher. We've saved a lot of money through using Gallagher. I think that proof is in the pudding, so to speak. And we do have significant control within this contract, and we need the expertise that they have, especially as the healthcare arena has changed.
This might be the place that I can also bring up my concern for a while about the committee. You know, I'm feeling that we might want to add somebody from the taxpayer public to put somebody else on our committee, just to help us oversee it. Right now, it's our internal people pretty much attending this, you know, all of the union people and several other people from Bart's office and so on, good people. But that has always been a concern of mine, that we need to maybe open that up to, add a couple of people from the outside to attend and help us oversee and see some things that we may be missing, just as Nancy's saying, you know, we don't know from time to time. I just, I don't know how you feel about that, Bart.
The committee is a negotiated agreement item. That's who, that's who creates this committee. We have members of all the unions part of this committee. We have, we added you and Kevin at the time. We had two board members. And that, that option is still there. We can, we can certainly ask a board member. But, because my feeling is, I mean, nothing against taxpayers, but they elected you, and they elected everybody up here. So if they want representation, they're doing it through you.
Well, I kind of introduced myself. I walked in and just said, "I'm here, guys." That's it. So I, you know, I kind of did it.
So, but it would have to be negotiated to do that.
Well, I think that if we look at that again, that there might be some place in there that we can still have, it's, it's open a little bit. I'll have to look at that, and you and I can sit down and look at that again.
Yeah, let's take a look at the contract language and see what it-
All right, let's do it.
Has it permissible?
Thank you.
All right, Bart, the roll.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The item has been approved. Contract with Gallagher will go forward. Number eight on the agenda is the Personnel Consent Agenda for May 5th this evening. And could I have a motion on the consent? Calendar, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second?
Second.
With a motion and a second, we have a fair amount of names on the Personnel Consent Agenda this evening, and I thought it might be a good idea if you talked to us about the purpose for all of those names.
Thank you, President Nestor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg, before you this evening, as the May 5th consent agenda, you've had the weekend and a few extra days there to review it, starting last week. I think all our questions have been asked. Well, I believe what President Nestor Baker is referring to is our number of summer school teaching names that we have. Those, remember, are contingent upon enrollment in the summer school program, but we do want to get them approved, Board approves. So when we get ready to roll those programs this summer, we'll have everybody in place for that. It's my recommendation that you approve the consent agenda as presented to you this evening.
Kurt, I thank you for that, and the reason I wanted you to say it is because I didn't want people thinking, "Oh, my gosh, look at all these staff members they've just added," when that is not at all what we were doing.
Those are, and they are supplemental contracts over the summer. They're hourly contracts, and, like I said, they are contingent upon enrollment in the courses.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Kurt?
Sure. So I have a question. 8.05, it's a one-time payment for evaluations. But it says through April 28th, April 28th through May 27th. So it's being done now? Is this done at the school buildings or at home, or how?
These are for evaluations that take place outside of the contract day, and it's my understanding that they occur at the home visits and/or on, after hours here in the building.
Okay.
The key for the payment is that they occur outside of their contract, their regular contract day.
I just didn't know if we still did home visits during the school year.
In the evenings, yes.
Okay.
Other comments or questions on the Personnel Consent Agenda?
Under 8.6, I just, again, there's a couple of items, a couple people on there that are way after the fact that we're approving. And I assume, I don't know what happened there. They were employed February 10th through April 14th, one of them, and another one from, I forget the dates, I didn't write that one down, but there was another one after the fact.
February 10th through April 14th?
February 10th through April 14th, yeah.
If you look, those are the final days, so we're finally getting the final day that that person was in that. And that, what that means is, when we put them in that position, we didn't have an ending date. We weren't sure when that person was coming back. So if you see that April 14th, that would have fallen probably after my deadline for the April consent calendar that we had last month. So we're just now getting it. All that is, is stating that those were the actual days that that person sat in that position. And being compensated at that rate.
Well, my concern is the Feb., you know, that person actually sat there since February 10th and expects to be paid, and we're supposed to rubber stamp it after the fact. And you know my pet peeve, I don't like that kind of thing. I think we need to look at those before they're employed. And that's, you know, that's not any problem, it's a head, Assistant Head Custodian, I see. But I'm sure it's not their problem, somehow, I don't know what happened there, maybe-
I can go back and look for you and see if Mr. Pressoria had been on the consent agenda with an open date on it.
Yeah.
The reason we put it here is so then it tells the Treasurer's Office exactly how many days they sat in that position. Their contract, were contractually required to put them in that, or we put them in that position, were contractually required to pay them in that position after a certain number of days, after three days. So all we're doing here is noting the exact number of days that they had, so we can go ahead and get them paid at that rate.
Oh, I see, there's salary changes at that point. I got you.
Yeah, yeah. So we, I mean, we have to have someone act as that Head Custodian while the absence is there. We just weren't sure when that person was coming back. So it's a timing, it's a timing thing. Dr. French, so?
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Chakowski?
Just, if I might add a little clarification on that one. If I understand correctly, Board policy currently allows the Superintendent to put someone in those positions without coming here, because we need to fill the position. So the February 10th is the start date based on when we needed that person. The end date, as Mr. Chakowski clarified, by the time he got notified of when that end date was. So we wouldn't come to you asking for approval for that person to start, otherwise we're going to have something sitting open, something not getting done. So you give me, by policy authority, you put someone in there and start them. And then we bring them back here for approval for pay. And so at the endpoint, on the April 14th, what Mr. Chakowski is saying is, those two on April 14th, we weren't sure what their end date was going to be, because they were waiting for someone to come back. By the time that person came back and the paperwork got to his office, we had passed that next April meeting. So this is the next logical opportunity for the Board to be able to see that and act on it. to see that and act on it. If the board's pleasures, they don't want people to start in positions without approving beforehand, that's a policy change that's going to, I'm going to tell you, I don't think is a good idea, because if that person, we needed them February 10th, and the meeting wasn't until February 28th, 18th, you would have had two weeks in there of not filling a position.
Yeah, that doesn't happen very often.
Which one?
It doesn't happen very often that you're filling an emergency situation.
No, and when they do, they play out like this. And that's when you see them like this. This is temporary fills for positions that just came open. So that's the timing of it.
So policy puts somebody in place, policy allows putting somebody in place, and they come here then with, now we know the date they began by policy, now we have the date that it's ending, and that's essentially what we're looking at now, right?
You're approving to pay them for those, for the dates that they acted in that position or worked in that position according to the policy.
Yeah, that's helpful to know that that's a policy-driven thing. Yep, thank you.
As long as, my concern is it doesn't get to be a habit, you know. That's, I keep bringing it up, because I, you know, and I know it isn't, and, but, but we just need to be aware that, you know, now, yeah, emergencies happen. Somebody, you know, needs to be filling in, somebody gets sick or whatever. Yeah, gotcha. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Kurt. I appreciate that. Bart, would you call the roll?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to item nine on the agenda, this is policy consent for this evening, but there isn't anything on the agenda this evening as regards policy, except a lot of discussion about it. We'll move on to item number 10, which is recommended action for old business tonight, and there is none. So we're moving right along, and Jen is already out of her seat. We're moving on to item number 11, which is recommended action, new business this evening. And we do have a handful of items on this evening, handful of very important items. The first one, 11.01, is the first reading, the recommendation to revise English Language Arts course of study and to purchase textbooks and materials. Could I have, nope, this is first reading, never mind. I will turn it over to Dr. Kellogg and Jen Knapp.
Before Jen begins, and I appreciate her work for tonight's presentation, although you'll vote on these, I believe separately, we'll give you an overview of where we are with curriculum adoption in this piece.
Well, would you, if you'd like to do the entirety, then we'll just say this is going to be item number 11 on the agenda. Is that the way you want to do it, since this is first reading tonight?
Fine by, fine by us.
If you can just flow that way, might be easier for you, Jen. Next week, we'll have to call them out, or next meeting, we'll have to call them out separately for the vote. But for purposes of tonight, since it's first reading and introduction, this will be 11.01, 11.02, 11.03, 11.04, dealing with English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Nestor Baker, members of the board. Tonight we will be considering courses of study that align with Ohio's new learning standards as part of our transition, as well as courses of study that expand opportunities for our secondary students. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to provide you with an overview. We use the state-adopted standards as the basis of our courses of study. We have utilized Ohio's model curriculum and the PARC Content Model Framework as a guide for instruction. And the committees of teachers, some are here with us this evening, have included additional information, such as student and teacher-friendly language in the form of learning targets to be used for daily instruction. The standards adopted by the state of Ohio in 2010 provide more focus, have increased rigor, and offer greater coherence both within and across grade levels. We are in an unusual situation as the state adopted all four core content areas in 2010, with implementation required for the start of the 14, 15 school year. It was because of this situation and our desire to offer a consistent student experience that we have adopted the courses of study in this way. Traditionally, a school district will say K-12 Social Studies and adopt across the board, or K-12 Mathematics. But what we found upon examining this is if we would do that in this short span, there would be gaps in the student learning experience. So they would miss, you know, very important content that they wouldn't have again. So the curriculum and instruction office did the best they could to make sure that those gaps were as minimal as possible. As you see why we have seventh grade Social Studies on for now, because, you know, a significant shift or part of the curriculum went to fifth grade. So we had to move that for fifth grade first, to make sure that our student experience was as consistent as possible. Also, we have Project Lead the Way curriculum, which is nationally recognized and is the basis for our additional courses for the Advanced Manufacturing Pathway and the Health Career Pathway that is supported by the Straight A Grant. We currently use a variety of assessments to determine both student achievement and student growth. These assessments include the Ohio Achievement Assessments, Ohio Graduation Tests, as well as district resources such as STAR, which provides teachers with information about a student's reading level. As we begin to implement the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, known as OTES, we will be working with our teachers to develop additional assessments, both to measure student growth and evaluate our curriculum. The materials listed on the course of study are within our allocated permanent improvement budget for curricular resources. You will see that some of our courses are traditional text-based courses, and some include shared resources. This is really our English Language Arts, in which teachers will have the opportunity to share novels between buildings, rather than each getting a class set. And we would utilize Destiny Manager, which is our textbook tool for those novels. In science, there is not a request for resources for grades eight, for grade eight. In the fall, our teachers will be piloting and examining the use of digital content. We would bring back a resource for board approval next year. And as a reminder, in grades six, seven, nine, and 10, which we have adopted previously, we have not requested additional resources in science. They're kind of holding out. They have some great curriculum that they really want to examine more fully. And with where we are with our learning and teaching roadmap, this just might be enough to offer our content in that way. So they're hopeful to pilot that, a couple of different products in the fall, and then we'd come back with something grades six through 10, probably next year at this time, if not a little bit earlier. And then Project Lead the Way includes some materials and associated professional development. And our professional development includes opportunities for our teachers to fully utilize those instructional resources, as well as opportunities to understand the changes in the curriculum. In partnership with our Teachers Union, there is designated time, our early releases, for teachers to learn about this new curriculum. And as always, while teachers learn about different instructional strategies, they still have the freedom to use the strategies they feel work best with their students. So at this time, do you have any general questions over the courses of study?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys want to go first? Do you have general questions?
You go first.
Alrighty, and I appreciate all the information that you gave. You already have partially addressed a bunch of the questions that I already had on the list, and I thank you very much for that.
Okay.
I just want to start out with saying very clearly that, to my way of thinking, the two most important categories that a school system has to work within and should pay the most attention to in so many ways, curriculum and people. And we are nothing as a school system without those two things. So as we look at curriculum, when you hear questions from me or you hear questions from us, it's because of the extraordinary importance of the work that you're doing and the work that the teachers are doing around curriculum. So I wanted to make sure that you understood that's where the questions come from. And by the way, to people who think that board members don't necessarily read these courses of study, oh, yeah, we read these courses of study. I guarantee it. I had a question today from someone asking me, "Do people actually read these?" Yes, we do. So one question that I have for you is, how much would you say, as you think about the courses of study that are being introduced tonight, and you think about all of the discussion that's gone on and all the coverage in the media and everything that's going on within the state around education, as you look at our courses of study, how much of them are from our own teachers versus prescribed by the state or by vendors?
And really, what the state adopts are the core content, are the content statements. So for example, with Social Studies in grade seven, there's 21 content statements. What they do also provide is a model curriculum that we can use and incorporate that in our course of study. So what our teachers do is they read through that model curriculum, determine what best fits their needs. Also, there's a nice component of that with content elaborations, which really explains a lot of the information that helps them write their learning targets. And then we have another component with English Language Arts and Mathematics, which is the PARC Content Model Framework. So really, what our teachers do is they sit down and they know the content statements. That's not negotiable. That's what the state has adopted. But then they pull from those different resources to say what works best for the course of study. So they spend a lot of time discussing what parts would make for the most robust course of study for our students.
I think that's a very important point to be discussed. There is a perception, and it's easy to fall into that perception, that suggests that all freedom within the district as regards how and what we teach has gone away. And that's incorrect. And I do, I would like to ask you to address, if you would, how much freedom teachers actually do have in determining their instructional strategies?
And they do have, as I mentioned before, we do allow students, or have opportunities for teachers to learn new strategies, but it is really up to them. It's their professional opinion to make sure that their students are learning. So whatever strategies they feel would best help them achieve that goal is the one that they should be using.
Let me ask you a sticky question.
Okay.
Mathematics.
Yes.
The word is that teachers are required to teach daily in groups in mathematics. Is that accurate?
They are not required to teach daily in groups. As we move, I think the biggest change with mathematics...
Daily in groups.
Daily.
Daily. Every day, they have to teach as groups.
Yes. The biggest shift for us, yes, there are certainly shifts in, especially in K-8, with the alignment of the state's standards. But there's also another component to mathematics, which are the eight mathematical practices that are incorporated in all of our courses of study. And I think it's the teaching of these mathematical practices, which is really where teachers are seeing a need or perhaps wanting to shift their instruction to address those mathematical practices.
We still have a ways to go with our mathematics implementation and with our development around that.
And one of the things, if I, can I jump to math or?
Oh, yes.
Okay. One of the things that we have, that we did last year is we purchased paperback books.
Yes.
That was not in, you know, thinking about middle school students or high school students, although it was highly recommended or greatly encouraged that they put those in binders. That wasn't necessarily the case. So they're not in great shape, and I've been in contact, or I've been playing phone tag, I'll be honest, with the vendor. She's on West Coast time, and I call her at 8:00, and she's not there, so I'm working on that. But to see if, okay, is this, you know, a common thing? This is where we are with volume one. How can you help support us? So that's my question out to her. We will be purchasing hardback books, and anything that gets rebound will be rebound in hardback. So that's how we're addressing that. Another component that we've discussed is, and we've had many conversations with parents and teachers and administrators, and we know that, or we would like to have parent meetings in early August to help frame the understanding. And just last Monday, actually, we were, Laura Hans and I were at one of the high schools having this conversation, and they were extremely receptive to that idea. In fact, I think they suggested it first, and we were receptive to that.
So the text that we're talking about for all of these courses of study, we should not expect to see the issues we've had with the paperback.
You are correct. And one of the, if I may, one of the issues was, I mean, a parent said, "My son's getting it. He loves it. But if I try to help him, if he's..." He goes, "I'm not quite sure." So one of our, and I thought about bringing the example tonight. So one of our eighth-grade math teachers said, "You know, I had this parent over, and I said, 'This is how you're used to remember, you know, learning it.'" Because really, we want, it's that shift to conceptual understanding and not just fluency and procedure and the algorithm. It's, okay, understanding the concept first. So he said, "Here's how you might have learned it. Here's how we're trying to help him learn it." And, you know, after two minutes, the parent's like, "Oh, okay." And, you know, it just kind of all made sense. So it's just those simple opportunities for more understanding, I think, will be, will go a long way.
You mentioned the teacher involvement in creating the assessments, and I'm assuming that will be ongoing.
Yes.
One of the things that I was concerned about in a number of the courses that are identified this evening is that the sections on assessments and resources are missing. Now, I am concerned, not just because I think it would be interesting to read those, but our policy states very clearly that assessment methods must be in the course of study, and they're not there for a number of them. What are we going to do about that?
Well, that's one thing that we do want to have as ongoing, and as the curriculum writes it, or as the curriculum is written, it says formative assessments and summative assessments, which, those two are certainly methods for assessment. But what we have done in the past is, as the teachers are teaching that particular content, they really have the opportunity to come up with great assessments. So we like to add those during the first year, as suggested assessments for teachers. You know, we don't have common assessments in our courses of study. So that's certainly something that we can continue to add to.
I have to think about how to deal with that, because what I don't want to do is approve a course of study that appears to be in violation of board policy. So I have to think about that between now and next reading as to how we can address that. It may be, and I know we've already been through Curriculum Council with these, but it may be that we need to put an asterisk on that provides that information, because I want to make sure that what we are doing is conforming to policy. Another question is, the information that identifies grade level up and down, the vertical alignment, if you will, is inconsistent in the courses of study. It would be very helpful to me, as I look at these courses of study and any other courses of study that we are having to approve in the way that you talked about it, it would be very helpful to me, and I think to parents and to educators as well, to understand where this course fits in the vertical alignment. Right now, it's very, very difficult to identify that. And whether we need to prepare some guides to go along with these pieces, I'm not sure what the answer is, but I do know that right now, we can't see the alignment, and that that makes it very difficult to determine whether what we're doing is exactly where we need to be going.
And I will say, because of our, you know, that at ODE, the people who wrote the model curriculum for science included those components. The people who wrote them for English Language Arts, to some extent, included those components. And for Mathematics, for Social Studies, they did not choose to include that in the model curriculum. So we did not add that as part of our course of study. But the science teachers felt that it was important to leave in. But as we looked at the resources that we did, that was not one of the things that was included from the state. So we can certainly reexamine that. But that was our, you know, basis for understanding.
Let's be thinking about how we can do that. I'm not saying it has to be done for the reading, the next reading. But I do think that we need to be a lot more explicit about what our vertical alignment is. Well, actually, our horizontal as well, but I'm particularly concerned about vertical right now.
Yes.
Let me just dovetail on that while you get ready.
Yeah.
I just, the questions that I get are most often around the state standards. And we've talked about, state comes up with just kind of this core information that needs to be learned. Now, how you teach it, the curriculum you use to teach it, the style you use to, all of that, that's locally grown in our garden. We have the privilege of doing that.
You are correct. Unlike, not all, not all states have that opportunity.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Some are state book.
Okay.
So they have three books for this particular content area, and you have to pick.
Yay, Ohio. The second question I get, no, that's great, really. It's good. I didn't know. The second question I get, that's why I'm dovetailing on Nancy here, that's the second piece that I get. How does, how does this course, Rick, fit in with he's taking or she's taking this in ninth grade, and then they're offering next year this, and I'm just not sure, they're saying to me, just not sure. So, yeah, I don't know if it's by next reading, but some really good schematic, you know what I'm saying, just tie those ends together, so people can look at it and say, whether they, whether they like, whether they like the floor or not.
Right.
That's how that fits with that. Okay, that's why they're taking that, and then they go into, those are like the two big areas that I get in the whole curriculum thing.
And I certainly think...
You're absolutely right.
Perfect timing.
I certainly think at this time, now that we have, now that we are prepared for the transition for 14, 15, that would be a great, this would be the perfect time.
Thank you for letting me jump in.
Oh, no, jump anytime. It's fine. I was wondering why the Project Lead the Way courses of study are permitted to be so very, very different from the format of our other courses of study?
Yes. And how Project Lead the Way differs, again, it's a nationally-recognized curriculum, in that we haven't had an opportunity for our teachers to go through professional development to really learn the ins and outs of that curriculum. That's something, their professional development will be supported from the Straight A Grant, and they'll be attending weeks of training over the summer. So I think at this time, you know, we went with what Project Lead the Way offers to us. And again, we're not really of the mind that we can make decisions based on what it is that we want to support that curriculum without going through that professional development.
Okay, so this, and the reason I raise this very specifically at this point in general questions, is because as I look at the format for the courses of study, and I think about the people who are reading what we offer, and when we offer it, and how we offer it, it is somewhat disconcerting when I look across courses of study and do not see the same elements.
Right.
So, you know, I'm not sure how we want to deal with that as we go forward. This is clearly... So, you know, I'm not sure how we want to deal with that as we go forward. This is clearly a case where it was not something that we wrote and designed in-house. So we, we, I just want us to be very careful about our formats and what we choose to include and what we do not. You mentioned the instructional materials. I'm a little concerned because for those that do have texts with them, they're not here. I can't see them.
Okay.
I'm wondering if it would be possible to provide those materials, examples of those materials for us to see-
Sure.
-next time. And I'm also wondering if it would be possible, I know it's possible, I'm asking nicely. I really would like to see the allocations for the instructional materials as well. I want to see what the allocations are for each of these course of studies. And I, of course, as of study, and I would like to see the instructional materials that are available.
Perfect. We can do that. We can have it set up about an hour before, if that works for you.
That would be, that would be excellent. And that is all I have at this point, as you answered the rest.
Okay.
You're talking about an hour before our, our next meeting. Is, is that the meeting where we do the 5:15? Don't we have something going on right, right at the?
Yeah.
That's not a surprise. Did I just blow a surprise?
No, 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 you didn't. I was just-
Oh, my goodness. You looked at-
Oh, no, Rick! Retirement, yeah, it is, I think.
I thought I blew something.
No, I was just thinking, oh, no, can we set this up?
Well, that's why I'm saying-
We can, we can set it up at four. I mean, what, just, you tell me the time, I will, we will be there.
I know you will.
Don't tell me secrets.
I'd like to see them several days before. So if you'll set them up down here so we can come down and, and look at them, I'd appreciate it.
Is that possible for you?
We can get that together, certainly.
Great. Let us know, yeah, what the plan is on that.
Okay. No problem.
If you, are you, got all your questions?
I, well, I just want a real comment, that's all. I appreciate Dr. Nestor Baker's questions because those were excellent and concerns. And, and I do appreciate the fact that you're telling us that the teachers have the freedom to, you know, to be involved and, and prepare the students and, and so on. But the ultimate end of the line is that they have to prepare them for the PARC test. So that's, that's always, you know, the bottom line. They, they know they have to prepare the students for that PARC test so that the students will pass it. And so I'm sure they're keeping that in mind as they go through the, the situation. So, and, and again, that's Common Core and so, are all of them Common Core now, including science?
No, just English Language Arts and mathematics.
Yeah, I thought so. You had mentioned you thought all four were, they were adopted in ten, 2010.
They're collectively, they're collectively called Ohio's New Learnings Standards because you have the science and social studies revised, and English Language Arts and Mathematics are Common Core. But all of, all four core content areas were adopted by the state of Ohio.
By the state, okay. Thank you.
Anything else before Jen continues, if you have other things that you want to talk about specifically?
I do not.
Okay.
Would you like me to go through specifically, or are you okay?
I'm asking, I want to know what they would like. Do you want to hear more specifics about these courses of study?
Nope, you do great.
I, I'm, I'm good. I appreciate that. And I, I do like that idea, though. That, that'd be good to come down at some point and just dive through some of the material, the texts. That'd be great.
One thing related to what Carol was talking about, back in December, you prepared an excellent chart, a thoroughly excellent chart, related to the assessments and the time that our students will be spending on those state assessments. I do not seem to have that in my files. And I wondered if you would please resend it to all of us. I think that it is something that I would very much like to be sharing widely.
Okay. Yes, and, well, this is off the topic, but we did have some students field test the Algebra I assessment at Central today. So we'll see how that goes. We're anxious to get feedback.
Yes. And speaking of that, the field testing, Scott Ibrak just walked in. I'm not calling you to the podium, Scott, don't worry about it.
I've been here.
Scott has provided some interesting information and was working with our staff. One point that I thought was worth bringing out, a question was asked of Scott, what does the state expect the passage rate to be on the field tests? And the state apparently only expects the passage rate to be from 25 to 36 percent. I can imagine the headlines that are going to hit when people do not fully understand what this means. So watch for that. I appreciate it, Jen, very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anything you'd like to add, Dr. Kellogg?
You know me. So if it's about curriculum instruction, I have something to say. Let me do a couple of things. Let me talk about the math piece real quick because I'm, too, I'm aware of concerns from parents, from teachers, from kids, from my own staff. Remind us of something. Math achievement in the United States has been lagging, and I don't care what metric you use, for a long time period. That's, that's a premise that drives all of this. Math achievement, both levels and performance from our students against national standards, has lagged for a while. So along comes a new set of standards which attempts to raise the bar. Part of that, as Jen referenced, and I would encourage people to take a look at this, are the eight mathematical practices associated with math, the design of which is to create the conceptual thinking students, students need to have to be good at math. In other words, do we want a generation of what I've termed plug-and-chug equation solvers? Or do we want people to understand math as a communication tool? The equation for a slope of a line is a communication tool. It's not just a plug-and-chug recipe for how to solve the slope of a line. And the more we can help students understand that, which is really what the new standards are getting at in the eight mathematical practices. The mathematical practices don't speak to content, they speak to how students understand math. So the next layer of that in the, the course of study we adopted is a set of instructional practices. The grouping practice that is embedded in that is designed as a research-based, evidence-based instructional practices, which enhances the eight mathematical practices. The difficulty's been in our implementation, both from our end as administratively and from the teacher's understanding of what that means. What was said tonight is accurate, and I agree with Jen on this one, and it is the case. I've said it multiple times. Our teachers have the authority and the wisdom to decide what practices work best for students. That said, I'll go back to the start. Mathematical performance of United States students has lagged for years. So we got to find a way. I think the eight mathematical practices is a right, is a right focal point. I'm not so sure that we're getting there at the rate we'd like and at, at the, the kind of feelings people like to have as we get there. So there's this careful balance between the bathwater and the baby. And I just think we, we want to encourage our teachers to be thoughtful about that measure. And I've challenged our administrative team, I'm sure Jen will tell you, we need to push ourselves administratively to make sure that we get the implementation of this thing in the right place. Part of that is, you don't have to teach in groups every day. Use your wisdom. But the other side of the coin is, take a look at the performance of your students to make sure that we're getting where we want to go. That said, the other piece is on the articulation and what parents understand, Mr. Velardo. Part of that comes in our, particularly the secondary level, which is really, really starts to happen because that's when courses differentiate. I can take honors, non-honors. That's where that course of study book becomes really important because that, that does a lot of the description about what this course is and where you should go to, and those conversations with guidance counselors as well. And it helps the bigger picture, too, so I agree with the articulation. We talked about elements that are in board policy, about what should be in our course of study. I think we really need to take a look at that from policy all the way down on through. Because I would share with you, I looked at an old course of study document that has the assessments. But the assessments they're talking about are teacher-level assessments about kid performance. What a board and a superintendent want at our level is, what are the assessments that tell us that the curriculum our kids are in is taking them to the standards we want? What Joey's grade is in third grade is important to me, but not as important as how a third grader is doing in preparation for a third grade reading guarantee. That's the data set you want. That's the assessment structure in our policy you want.
But it's got to be in the course of study.
It's got, it's got to be in there explicitly. I think we've come to rely on OAA OGT-
Yes.
-as that measure, but haven't been explicit about it in our policy. The last thing I want to hit on was the PARC piece, which is going to be interesting. We did a trial run today and we're getting some experience with it, the way teachers need to target that. Keep in mind that those, you mentioned the assessment drop-off. I'll tell you two things. Three years ago, when they started talking about PARC, the predictions nationwide that there'd be 30 percent drop in performance when the new, when the new curriculum came in, and then the assessments to measure it, a 30 percent drop in performance from where we're at now. Meaning if you're at 80 percent, you're now at 50 percent. And that's what you're referring to. I would remind you that years ago, when I first got here, we went from the ninth grade proficiency test to the 10th grade OGT. In the year of the trial run, it was a disaster. The failure rates were reported, and I, 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 feel free to check me on that, my, my numbers may be wrong, but I remember 25, 30 percent pass rates. And what the state chose to do at that time was set the proficiency cut score at a level that allowed us to have pass rates that people more acceptable. So a little more history. I believe it was the state of Massachusetts which chose not to drop the standard for passing on their state test. They kept the bar high and started with low pass rates for their schools and have creeped up and have been a nation leader for years. And so all of this, there's history to all this that we all need to kind of understand as we go down this path. I don't want a drop in performance from our students. I don't want our teachers feeling there's a drop in performance, but let's contextualize this thing. The bar's gone up, the finish line moved again, the implementation has been a short timeline, there've been limited resources on the state, federal, and on a local level for implementation. Our teachers are working their heart out. Our kids are trying to do their best with it. As policymakers, let's make sure we're, we're shoring them up, but let's not hide from the fact that we need to do better. And if, and if that means we're staring, it's, that makes us uncomfortable, let's accept it and, and help our kids be successful and put the resources there we need. So a lot of work to be done here, but we'll get it done. So I appreciate Jen's time, the board's time, and I'll shut myself up now.
And I would quickly like to thank the teachers that came here tonight who have been working on this. We have Laura Hans and Jackie Calle with Mathematics and Autumn McCormick with Science. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jen. This will be back again, obviously, for the next reading. Moving on in the agenda to number 12, which is the Recommended Action. This is our Standing Business section, and we do have a few items here this evening. 12.01 is a resolution approving the summer 2014 capital improvements, construction projects related to asbestos abatement. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, Mr. LaRose?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. The abatement work is part of the capital improvements levy that the community approved in 2009. And the scope of work includes asbestos abatement to support the window replacement work at South High School, the exterior door replacement work at Emerson, Hanby, and South, the locker replacement work at North and South, and the floor replacement work at Walnut Springs. And all of these projects being previously approved by the board. Bids were solicited in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and publicly read on April 8th. We received three bids, the lowest bid from Leap Price Enterprises in the amount of $145,876. And this is 700 and, 7,124 under the engineer's estimate. So we are recommending that the board accept the asbestos abatement bid from Leap Price Enterprises as presented.
Questions? I have one. Why is it so much less than the engineer's estimate?
It's 7,124. That's not a lot less than-
Okay, I'm sorry. I heard 70 and I couldn't figure out where, where 70 came from.
I apologize.
No, it's not you, it's me. I must have, I simply misheard you. I'm sorry, Jeff.
Not a problem.
That's Mr. LaRose's strong-arm tactic.
Yes, that's it.
I like it.
Would you call the roll, please, Bart?
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The resolution approving the asbestos abatement for the summer has been approved. Moving on to 12.02, this is a resolution approving food service renovations at Westerville South, at Blendon, and at Ann Hurst. Could I have a motion on this resolution, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second. Would you like to talk about this and see if I hear your number correctly?
Absolutely. These projects are, per the request of our Food Service Department, and being funded from their current cash balance. The scope of work includes renovation of the kitchen serveries at South, Blendon, and Ann Hurst, and are being implemented to replace aging food services equipment, increase nutritional offerings for our students, and decrease the processing time for students going through the lunch line. Again, construction bids were solicited in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and publicly read on April 24th. We received three bids. The lowest bid was from 2K General Company in the amount of $472,500. And we therefore recommend that the board accept the food renovation bid from 2K General as presented.
For $472,500. See, I heard it.
Very good.
Questions regarding this? And we have discussed these renovations in the past. Mr. Griffith, would you call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The resolution approving the food service renovations at Westerville South, Blendon Middle, and Ann Hurst Elementary has been approved. Moving on to 12.03, this is a resolution to approve admission and waiver of tuition for a foreign exchange student. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
With a motion and double seconds. Who would like to discuss this?
I guess this is mine. We've, under board policy, of course, we've accepted foreign exchange students and provided the waiver of tuition. These students reside with Westerville residents, are tax-paying residents, and we assign them to a school based on the host family's address. So this student, I'm going to foul up the last name, I'm sure, Nora Peveling, coming from Germany as part of the Rotary Youth Exchange Program, so I recommend approval.
Comments or questions?
And this is number what for next year?
Dr. French, I'm not sure the exact number at this point, but something, I know you've expressed concerns before about the number, something we can take a look at from a policy perspective, guideline perspective, if we need to.
I just, I just thought you knew approximately off the top of your head. That's all right. I think so far, maybe it's five or some, that we've approved recently or something, maybe. Yeah, I don't know if there's any more than that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Bart, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The resolution to approve admission of and waiver of tuition for foreign exchange student-
Second.
-has been approved. It's okay. 12.04 is the resolution authorizing continued membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2014-2015 school year. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, Dr. Kellogg, would you like to talk about this?
Pretty standard, I think, annually, if I'm correct. The board has to pass a resolution authorizing continued membership in Ohio High School. I recommend passage, otherwise we don't have another conference to go to. So I'd recommend that we approve this one.
This is a monopoly, yes. Any comments or questions related to the Athletic Association?
We weren't sure. Bart and I were discussing this ahead of time, how much this costs, but we were guessing, you know, so I don't know.
I don't believe, I don't believe there's a membership fee.
You don't think there is? That's, that's right. I, you know, I'd heard that last year, I thought. But then we thought, well, maybe there's a minimal fee or something involved. It's just a membership volunteer, we, we must be a part of it. All right, thank you.
Just our blood, sweat, and tears.
No money, that's great. Thank you, Dr. Kellogg.
Bart, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Velardo?
An enthusiastic yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Too enthusiastic.
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. Yes, we will continue our membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2014-2015 school year. Item 13 on the agenda is the second portion of public comments. And in this portion of public comments, the comments are for the good of the order. In other words, you can talk about anything that's for the good of the district. And you, once again, have five minutes to speak. However, no one has signed up to speak this evening. So we will move on to board comments tonight. Who would like to speak first?
I'm passing.
Passing.
I'll let you, no, I'll let you.
I prefer you go first.
I prefer you go first. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. No, good reports, I really, oh, the what?
I'll go. Yep.
No, I'll go.
The first Monday in May is designated as School Bus Drivers Appreciation Day. So today is the day we get to recognize the role that our bus drivers play in safely transporting our children to and from. A couple weeks ago, maybe five weeks ago, we, the board members, went to the transportation facility on Walnut, and they gave us a tour, and it is a fantastic facility. So a couple little things that our bus drivers do for us. They put on the School Bus Musical, which is actually put on by the bus drivers, and it's fantastic. In fact, for years, my kids come home humming and singing the songs for days. It's gained local and national recognition. We also have a first-time riders program, and that's for those new kindergarteners that are feeling a little anxiety, and they get to go and step on the bus and get in the seat and kind of figure it out, and that's really fantastic, too. And one little piece of trivia, our buses travel about 1.5 million miles per year. That's equivalent to a round trip from New York to Los Angeles. I just thought that was a fun fact. The next big thing is, and I'm sure most of you know, Teacher Appreciation Week is this week. So our teachers these days aren't just teachers anymore, and I'm trying to look out here at you teachers. We realize there are counselors who help kids through difficult times, confidants who are there for kids when they just need someone to listen, and there are cheerleaders who celebrate in all of the students' success. We appreciate our teachers here in Westerville. We see firsthand the amazing things they do for our students, and we are grateful for the career path they have chosen. On behalf of myself and our district's leadership team, a special word of thanks to our professionals who make a difference in the lives of our children every day. So please take a moment this week to reach out to a teacher and thank them. That's it.
Very nice.
No, I was just going to thank Jeff and Jennifer, just all the work that y'all have done, these, these reports. I love when we come underneath what the engineer says it's going to cost.
By $7,000.
7,000 or 70? No, it's seven. That's, that's tremendous. I, I do get a lot of questions about, you know, state standards and Common Core, and I get questions from my children about that, and what I tell them is that it's going to be so much harder, because I'm just that kind of father. I, no, I don't tell them that.
Okay.
But I love, no, I'm kidding. But I love that it's going to go deeper, and that it's going to be less, just figure out the answer, but how do you get the answer, and what are the best ways to get there? So I'm, I'm, given the level of quality of teachers that I know we have in this district that I experience, because I have kids in the district, and given the level of excellence that they try to show to the children, students, weekly, that I experience, because I have kids in the district, and now given the level of, uh, quality that I think we're trying to bring in the curriculum, I'm very excited about it. And with a sixth grader and a fourth grader in the district, and I can say to you, I'm excited about the direction that they are going to be led. I'm very pleased with some of what I heard tonight, and excited about some of this curricula. That's it.
And I hope that my questions were not interpreted as me not being pleased. I think there are some remarkable things in this curriculum, and always, when I read the curricula that we have here in Westerville Schools, I drool, because there is so much that's great and so much that's exciting within it. I will admit, I am not a fan of the PARC assessments, I am just not. I am not a fan of the amount of testing that our children are put through in any way, shape, or form, do I think it's appropriate developmentally. However, if I separate that from what we're talking about this evening, and what we'll be voting on at our next meeting, our curriculum, our courses of study in the various disciplines, those pieces I am in favor of, those pieces are very strong. And Westerville has built its history on a strength of curriculum, and we're going to continue to do that as we continue to make sure to protect the academic freedom of our teachers to deliver the instruction that needs to be delivered. So, yes, I am with you totally on that, except I don't like PARC assessments. Cindy, is there anything you'd like to say this evening?
President, Dr. Nestor Baker, can I make a comment?
Yes.
It has been an extreme pleasure for me to serve on the Westerville Boards of Education for over 14 years. I am most proud of the privilege to share in the family's celebration of educational achievement and shake the hands of over 18,000 graduates. As you well know, in March of 2013, I was diagnosed with ALS, better known as Lou Gehrig's disease. My goal was to stay on the Westerville Board until January and welcome the new board members. I felt good and decided to take it one day at a time. After all, I still wanted to have input on the directions of the elementary schools. This is when the disease began to deceive me. My body has deteriorated, but my brain has remained sharp. This disease, ALS, has only strengthened my commitment to education and finding a cure. Why does ALS continue to be such a progressive and fatal disease with today's medical capabilities? We need to raise awareness and find a cure for ALS, Scott. Why we have formed the Crowe-Wentz winning the fight foundation. In closing, I would love to take the time to thank everyone who has joined me and my family in fighting this disease, but we would be here all night. So now I would like to sincerely thank everybody for all you have done for me and my family. My husband, Alan, and my two handsome sons, Brandon and Tyler, really appreciate it. Madam President and fellow board members, I have been living my dream over the past 14 years, and it is with a heavy heart that I submit my resignation from the Westerville Boards of Education effective May 19, 2014.
Thank you, Cindy. I'm going to leave those comments as they are, and move on to dates, times, and locations. This is very difficult. Give me one.
Sorry.
Thank you. We will meet on Monday, May the 19th, in regular session. We will be recognizing retirees at that point in time, which we may also need Kleenex for.